Yes.
Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of June 20, 2019. This is where we take the most important meetings.
So moved.
By Gordon. Second. By Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some people here in attendance. Welcome everyone. I'm so glad to see people in the audience. At this time, we have the public comments section, and it's not an open public forum. Speakers may address topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment, or items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Would anyone like to say anything during the public comments section? Sure, come on up. Yeah, that mic right there. And then you just need to state your name and address. Please.
So I'm Tim Graham, Three Beacon Street. So I'm here on behalf of my daughter Sophie, in support of volleyball, which is on the agenda tonight. I'm also the treasurer of the Boosters. So just want to pass along the amount of time and effort that's been put in on this agenda item. I want to thank Patrick, our athletic director, for working closely with us on this. There's been a lot of girls that have been looking forward to this. They had a meeting maybe a couple weeks ago. Fifty-six somewhat girls attended it. Sophie moved. I married about a year or so ago. Sophie moved. This is her first year in town. She came from Walpole, had a very well-established volleyball program. She's had a successful first year in the school, along with her sister Claire. And one of the things I promised her when she came in, that I would do everything in my power to help out to get volleyball as one of our sports in town. I've raised three boys, my second of which just graduated from the school district. There's nothing like playing for your hometown in the sports that you love and wearing the blue and gold, and I want the same opportunity for my daughters as well. So I ask that you guys support that measure tonight. I made a commitment to John and to Patrick and to the girls, that I would do whatever I could, so I joined Boosters. I will fundraise any way I can. I'll do whatever I can to support it, so that the girls have a great experience. Hockey was a great success for the girls. I want to see the girls have the same thing with volleyball. So I hope that you guys support that measure tonight. I look forward to supporting Sophie and the girls going forward, and hopefully my youngest daughter Claire will join as well. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate you bringing up this as an agenda item tonight. And again, I look forward to moving forward with it. It's a quick turnaround, starts in the fall. It's a fall sport. So again, anything you guys can need from Boosters or me individually, I'm more than happy to help. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have the superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting minutes from May 17th, and I would take a motion to approve, that was Gordon, Rob, and myself, I would take a motion to approve those minutes from May 17th, which I left on your seats there.
So moved.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I would take a motion to approve the policy subcommittee meeting minutes from June 4th, and that was just Trista and myself.
Still moved.
Moved by Trista. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Trista. And then, the only other thing I have under that is, I'm trying to schedule a workshop for us on the school committee, and so I have the following dates that were given to me. So I was wondering what date might be the best, or work the best for everyone. I tried for some dates the end of July, but those dates didn't work out for the person doing the workshop. So I have August 1st, which is a Thursday, August 3rd, which is a Saturday, and August 6th, which is a Tuesday. And the person, I'm trying, it would be probably around two or three hours, and well, obviously the Saturday one will be probably during the day, or in the morning, or something. And then, if it was Thursday or Tuesday, it could be day or night. So, I mean, you don't have to get back to me today. You can get back to me by the end of the day, Monday.
Well, I just want to know, I'm taking a course the end of July through the beginning of August. Travel home on Tuesday the 6th, so I could make a meeting that night, I'm sure.
Maybe I could shoot for the 7th? If everybody was, if that's, if everybody was.
The first two dates don't work for me, but I can do, I can do the 6th too, or the 7th, so.
Okay.
Just at night, I couldn't do during the day.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I haven't nailed in my schedule yet personally. And I was curious, I think we talked about this earlier too, is there a possibility of using doodle? Does that go into violation? Or we can just throw the dates out there and people can check box?
Usually I just send an email, or ask at a meeting, but we won't have any meetings before then. So I, right now, I have August 7th at night, is what the date that I'm going to shoot for.
So we're not doing the 6th?
Gordon, are you, he said you're coming back on the 6th, I guess, since he was coming back on the 6th.
I can, I can make sure I travel during the day, so I could be here for a meeting at night.
Okay, so either the 6th or the 7th at night?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And next up, I have superintendent's corner.
You have the proposal for girls' junior varsity level volleyball program that we're asking for some action this evening. I am, I propose that we do it. I think it's a great idea for more, the more activities we have for kids to do, and for their student body to be involved in, is the ultimate, the ultimate. It just, it's just, it gives so much to the school, to offer another sport, to offer another activity, to offer something else for kids to participate in. Not everybody's going to do cross-country, not everybody's going to do golf, not everybody's going to do football. This is another, not everybody's going to do girls' soccer. This is an opportunity for our kids to, once again, excel in a program that we haven't had. It's not a club sport in East Bridgewater, just like girls' hockey. You have some kids that do it. We can expand out, I mean, Patrick did a survey, had 56 girls sign up, give support. They're here this evening to give support. Patrick's done a nice job with the, if I can say anything about the athletic program, that when he does a survey, and he goes out, and he does his homework, and he pushes a sport forward, he really does his due diligence, so that we're not left with five kids on a team. With the web hockey, we had kids on the bench, I mean, everybody got to play, but we fielded our, our part of the team, along with West Bridgewater. He wouldn't have brought this to me if he didn't think that this was going to move forward, and he didn't think he had the girls to go forward. The girls are here this evening, they're smiling, they're hoping that this goes through. Mr. Graham, you know, he has, his boys have been here, he's part of the program, he understands the culture, he understands the climate of the athletic program here. He wants to help. I think it's, it's nice to see the support coming from that side as well, coming from someone that's in the gridiron, that has so much capacity with the boys coming over to the Boosters Club, that can really support this, and understands the raising of funds for this. John and I spoke about it earlier today, you know, we, we've done some good shifting this year with our bus, our transportation and things like that, so there is some funds available. I think that we need to support our kids. They came forward, they want to do something, they want to be part of a varsity program. It starts out as junior varsity, they have to work forward into the program, but I give my full endorsement for the program.
I have one question and one statement. My one question is, do we think that only 30 uniforms is enough, or do we think we need more? Because, I mean, it seems like a small number, but I don't know how many people are on a, are on a volleyball team.
You got to sit down and talk into the mic.
I put that on a high number. Obviously, this is for budget reasons, and that, that number's actually for two teams, so it would be a varsity and a JV team. So 30's plenty. We don't have to go out and get varsity uniforms right away. We're just trying to get the program established right now.
And the dollar amount for the uniform seems pretty small.
So we have one year left on a vendor contract, and we get 40% off uniforms. So we've been doing that for the last three years, four years.
Well, so my one statement, does anybody have any questions?
I have two questions, real quick. So one is, are there any Title IX implications where we're only adding it as a girl's sport?
It would actually help us out that we got a JV boys tennis team this year.
Okay.
JV tennis. We established a boys tennis team, so now that we could have a girls' hockey, I'm sorry, girls' volleyball. So we're, we're writing compliance.
Cool. The other question I had was, are we able, given it's so quickly, are we able to declare it varsity sport, like this fall? I didn't realize.
No. It's suggested through the state level that you start out as club or JV, much like we do with girls' hockey, and then you kind of program develop from there. Like, I'll take my girls' hockey coach for an example. Her and I sat down, evaluated the season. She feels much stronger about going to another JV schedule for one more year, and then flipping over to varsity. So there's no real timeline, it's just kind of where the program takes off.
So it wouldn't be varsity for the fall, it would be a club?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do. I love the idea. My only concern is that it's wonderful to start it, but we then have to support it forever and ever, so to speak. And so my only concern is the budget implications. It's not, the verbiage wouldn't say contingent on booster support, but, you know, we can't always count on it. It's nice to have it, but I guess my question would be for John and Liz to say, you know, what's the prognosis that, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, it's not going to have any kind of impact, on negative side, on our budget?
At least for the, the next five years, with that busing contract. We're sa, I'm estimating that we should be saving about $13,000 a year on our athletic transportation. Our waiting fee went from $60 an hour to $45 an hour in our new contract, so that would more than support this program, at least for the next five years.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the busing, in general, student transportation, falls under a separate line item, not directly in our operating budget?
Regular transportation falls under a separate line item. Athletic field trips fall under the operating budget and the athletic revolving account.
So the, I know, I know we presented that the new contract would save us somewhere, I think, like $15,000 a year, thereabouts?
On regular transportation.
On regular transportation.
It's also going to save us 12 to 13,000 on.
On athletics.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, not only did we sit down with Lucini on the regular transportation, we also sat with Lucini on the athletic and field trips, and said, "We can't keep, you know, this waiting time and this affordability time." I mean, we, sending three buses out for football, you know, for the day, that's, that's a big expense.
Yep.
So, and he's worked with us, and Lucini's been good to us. I mean, he continues to work, and John continues to work the numbers, and I think we're, I think we're good for five years. Reminder that the kids do participate, they do pay to play still, which I certainly don't like, because we're a public school. I'd like to pay for, I would love kids to, to be able to play for free, but would they still, if the, you know, the kids are going to still have to pay the athletic fee?
Right.
To pay. So I mean, there will be more funds in the athletic budget. So we're, for me, it's a win-win.
So what's the impact after the athletic fee?
Well, if you have 30 kids, and it's $250 per student.
Okay. I didn't know what the fee was.
Yeah, $250.
Right, yeah, right now, we're pretty much, we've gone under the assumption that all these kids are playing another sport already.
$350.
So there wouldn't be any additional revenue. That's a very conservative way to look at it, but there are, there are some kids that are not playing another sport, who would be paying. So it's not 30 kids at 350.
It's not brand-new athletes that are playing.
It's, it's going to be brand-new fall athletes, though. So we had all our fall signups. Field hockey had a record number at 60. Girls' soccer didn't lose any, they're at 50-something. Girls' cross-country is still 20-plus high, coming off a South Shore League championship, first time ever. And then we had 60 girls sign up for volleyball. So we haven't lost any females in any sport yet. We're just gaining them for the fall.
That's huge.
And just for the folks maybe at home, back a number of years ago, in the budget, there was no line item for sports funding. There was obviously student participation, and then the rest was just sort of fit in there somewhere. We now have a line item for, for, to fund sporting, the sports teams, in addition to the student participation as well, too. So all of that's incorporated into our budget.
Yes.
As we now speak, and we think adding this, given the savings on busing and whatever, we should be neutral as far as, not going to have any impact on the budget, we just got approved.
I don't believe so.
Okay. So I'm all in favor of the girls' volleyball team for five years. Talk to me in six years.
One question for Mr. Leonard. So for the first year would be JV, and then the following year should be able to go up to varsity?
Again, I would evaluate that with the coach and the program itself, to see where we're at, in the competition that we're playing. If we feel it needs more development, we would stay at the JV level, much like we're doing at girls' hockey right now.
Right.
It'd just be a yearly evaluation, until we get to the varsity level.
Anybody else have any more questions?
The only thing I can say is that if we have something for kids to do after school, it means they're involved, and it means they're engaged.
I think it's great.
And if we can offer something else to girls, I think it's a win-win for us. I apologize, I did say 250, it's 350. We probably won't lower that until Dr. Williams' sons graduate, and then we'll lower it, but other than that, it's at 350 right now.
I think that's going to come back to haunt you.
Got all three playing this year, so.
You know, we're talking about the budget, and even, so you're saying it's mostly not new athletes, you're saying it may be, so let's split the middle. Say it's 20 new athletes at $7,000 a year in fees, that's taking care of the bulk of this. So we're not even talking about a.
But we're also talking about a sport that doesn't have a lot of equipment.
Right. It's a pretty cheap sport to fund.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's not, you don't have pads and helmets and chin guards and mouth guards, and, you know, it's, it's.
I move that we approve the addition of the girls' volleyball program.
Second.
Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now have girls' volleyball.
Congratulations, girls.
I'm going to bring up Brenda Lee, next.
Hi.
Brenda Lee is from the class of 1989.
Yes.
30 years.
Yes, we're celebrating our 30-year reunion. I appreciate you having me here at the last minute, and all the help I got to get to this point. The plan, we were thinking about, we've had five classmates pass away, so we were thinking of doing a memorial tree for them. Something, you know, along, I called the DPW, been in touch with them, and obviously something that would be suitable to our area, and we thought that the high school would be a good location for it. So I did call the DPW, talked to John Haynes, and he said there are a few locations here where I guess trees have been lost, and opportunities to plant one, so it wouldn't be a problem. I would have to identify a spot, and identify a tree, and then just coordinate with him for the planting. Our reunion is August 3rd, and we would like to have the tree with us at our reunion, and then we need to put it in the ground immediately. So it would be August 5th, August 6th. And just looking to have an okay to put it here, know who I'd have to contact to get other approvals. I'm not sure if signage would have to be approved ahead of time, if we wanted to put a plaque on. That's something that we can wait on until after, but if we could just take care of the tree and get it in the ground, it'd be great.
We have benches at other schools that have plaques on them.
Uh-huh.
As long as you're asking the school committee for their, for their support of this, I think we're going to be okay, but this is, it's up to.
I would totally support it. My only question, and I think you just had the answer, was that there should be some recognition on the tree, so people just don't walk by it years from now and say, "That's a nice tree," but.
Oh, it's definitely going to say, "Class of 89." I mean, that's, we actually, I'd like to, would like to have something that would eventually just commemorate all of us. So something, you know, not everybody's individual name, but a general sentiment that would live on as, as we go. But, yeah, so that's the plan. We just, we like the idea, and we think this is the appropriate location for it in town.
So, how do we want to do this, everyone? Do we want to vote every, all of it, the plaque or the, the tree?
I, I, I would like to just say, allow them to have a, a tree with a plaque. We have them, we have one at Mitchell School. The plaque is, you know, I don't think it's going to be audacious, it's going to be a plaque underneath.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, for Tori, yep. And it's, it's appropriate. And I think that the Class of 89, just coming forward, just to be able to, to support each other, and the loss of their classmates is an honorable, nice way of remembering people. And, you know, there's, Dr. Williams, myself, and John are here. You know, Dr. Williams is our coordinator of colors and aesthetics around, and she's picking the colors for the new Mitchell cafeteria right now. She'd be a good person to go outside and take a look to where the tree would be.
Okay.
Or John. But I think there's, there's, there's some great things out there.
Yeah, I've done a little bit.
And there's some areas, there are, there are certainly areas that could be a nice place for the tree.
Yes.
So that people could see it.
Yeah.
And know that you support each other, and honor, and remember those that were lost.
Yes.
I would. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, just trying to, again, think ahead. After the five years in girls' volleyball teams, all done, and other people in place, yeah, just trying to think ahead of what other issues might come up. I don't know if this has come up in the past, where other classes want to dedicate something. I don't know whether it helps us to be in the minutes to say, you know, it, it's a tree, it's part of our environment, there's no adverse effect on the building, on the traffic, on any of those things. So I can't imagine what else people would come forward to years ahead to say, you know, I don't know, we want to put something in the road, or whatever, but I don't think so. But we should just say, I think, based on what it is, we're assuming that it's going to only go in a place where DPW says it should go, and like you said, the, I would imagine that Mrs. Legault has final say on what the, assuming the verbiage on the sign's acceptable, but somebody on, in the administrative office should accept it. And with all that in place.
Brenda's already spoken to John Haynes, but we, we spoke to John Haynes coming into the spring, because we were losing trees. If you can see, if you're driving in and driving out, we've lost a few trees inside the barriers, and he suggested that we go with a different type of tree. I'm sure that he's told you that you can't put this type of tree in there.
Right.
Because the root system will not grow in there. So I'm sure that he's already offered you, probably, some.
Recommendations.
Examples and recommendations of what you should. So I have no problems with that.
I would.
I move to allow the class. Tree plaque on school grounds.
I have, I move that we accept a generous donation of a tree, remembering classmates of the 2019 who have passed away, along with a plaque.
1989.
A second by Tim. Would move by me, second by Tim. I just, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch.
Yeah, just, just come up to the office, or send Barbara.
Yeah, as I get more details.
Sure.
I'll have something written up.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm glad at least one of the trees will be replaced out there.
Maybe it'll start a trend with all the.
Yes.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay. One last note, is that the EB Multimedia Club went to MIT on Monday, they had an awesome time. They went to the Social Media Lab, they had extensive tour of MIT, they went to the video labs, they went to the Hack Museum. Russ brought the kids to the MIT, they had lunch there. He was just talking to us before he left. He said, "It's just such a great experience for the kids to go up and see Multimedia Lab." Because it's, just a reminder, that we have kids in all areas, not just sports, not just band, not just the arts. We have kids that are in technology and the multimedia, going out to do, you know, want to be a broadcaster, work behind the scenes. It's really nice to have EB Cam to take the kids, to go on a field trip, to go up to MIT, walk around, see a beautiful campus, and to be involved, and to see their equipment compared to ours. And so I'm glad that the kids had the opportunity. I want to thank EB Cam, Russ, for taking them up to MIT and having a nice field trip. So my next and final this evening, is I am very proud to introduce this evening the new junior senior high school principal at the, at East Bridgewater Public School District, Jeffrey Silva. He comes to us from Bridgewater-Rainham as the assistant principal for the last three years. He taught 22 years in the history department at Bridgewater-Rainham. He has his daughter Abigail's birthday today, who turned 18. She just graduated from Dartmouth High School this year. She will be attending Bridgewater State University in the fall. Zachary is 15 years old, entering his sophomore year at Dartmouth High School. Catherine is eight, and she's entering fourth grade at Potter Elementary in Dartmouth. He tells me his children and their activities, and their successes are his personal highlights. They are incredibly active in a variety of activities, and one of his best moments occurred a few weeks ago, as he watched his daughter graduate from high school. Says he's never felt so much pride as he'd had watching her at that moment. He's been, he's been privileged to be a part of several state championships in his playing and coaching career in baseball. His final high school game as a player was winning a state championship. He also had an opportunity to win a state championship as an assistant coach for New Bedford High School in 1998 at Fenway Park, and as a head coach, he won his league championship five times out of 12 seasons, and made the state tournament 11 out of 12 years. So he certainly understands high school athletics, the high school demeanor, and what needs to, and the pride that comes along with both teaching and athletics. He graduated from New Bedford High School in 1993. He graduated with a bachelor's degree from 1997 from the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. He went to Fitchburg State in 2003, and he received his administrator license from DESI in 2013. He's been in education for 22 years. I want to congratulate Jeff. We had a successful contractual negotiations today. It took us all of about five minutes, after we spoke the other day with Dr. Williams and myself, for about an hour. He came back, we spoke the following day. I did speak to Superintendent Swenson, I spoke to Angela Watson, the principal of Bridgewater-Rainham. They cannot say enough about his character, his morals, his integrity, and his ethical responsibility to students and his staff. I think he's the right choice for us. I don't think it, I know it. He's a, he's going to change the culture, he'll change the climate, he wants to get to know us first, and then we'll go from there. So Jeff, we're very excited to have you. I'd like you to come up and just introduce yourself, and have a seat. This is Jeffrey Silva, Sylvia. Did you want to do this? He told me I didn't spell his name right on his contract today, no, she was telling me. Jeff, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Welcome to East Bridgewater.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. Very excited to start, really looking forward to it. Like Superintendent said, I just, it's, my kids are my pride, and, and when I say my kids, school, you know, where I've been for the past 22 years, my entire professional career at Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School, those, that's my extended family. And I'm really looking forward to having that same mindset here at EB. So thank you very much for the opportunity, it is excellent to meet you, and I'm really looking forward to starting.
And as Tom Kenny would say, "It's great to be a Viking."
Great to be a Viking. Great to be a Viking. And actually, thank you very much for, on a side note, thank you very much for accepting the girls volleyball. I will be your biggest fan. So I, I am size large, and I will wear all that pride, so.
Mr. Leonard.
I will definitely, I'm really looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time, your effort, and, uh, again, I'm looking forward to starting and, and, uh, you know, I'm in the transition phase right now, and it's, there's a lot of sleepless nights right now, but, uh, you know, it'll come with, with time, and, and I'm gonna really, you know, get to know the lay of the land and, and the people, and especially the students that, that make up this fine community, so looking forward to it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
We'll see you Monday morning.
Yes, you will. What about tomorrow?
He's, he's, he's going back over to BR, he's gotta clean up a few things. Derek told me that you gotta stay till tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I have to sign in my office.
Yeah.
Are you all set with your prepared tour announced, Superintendent?
No. I have one more. So I, I speak a lot about, um, Deb Vaughn and our food program, our lunch program. When you have a director that puts, uh, the amount of time that she does into following up, calling DESI, doing the right things, checking over and over again on prices, and is she doing the right thing, um, on serving? And does she have enough people on the line, and, and are the kids eating healthy, and are they getting enough food? And, you know, sometimes they tell us, these are the portions, and she says, "No, we're gonna add a little bit more because we've got 18-year-old boys or, you know, 10-year-old boys that need to eat." She's done really, really well. Um, and she's done so well that, um, the amount of money that she brings in at, for the district has allowed us to keep, again, once again, for, this will be the fifth year in a row, our prices the same. That's a big deal. It's a big deal for our students and our parents. We are, we hover 18% free and reduced lunch. So we don't have a lot of people who need free and reduced lunch, but we have enough. And there's probably more than 18%, and some people feel that they may not need, or they don't want anybody to know that they get free and reduced. So I, I, I say it one more time, please fill the paperwork out when it comes home with your kids from Central School, Mitchell School, and the high school. If you need some help, you're gonna get the help, and no one's gonna know you to get the help. Nothing comes up. But I just wanna thank Deb Vaughn and all of her, um, all of the people that work in our cafeterias. They do a tremendous job. They are so nice, and they try different things, and they ask the kids what they want to eat, and that's a big deal. Um, not every kid wants to have anything else but peanut butter and jelly. Some kids don't wanna have anything else but tuna fish because that's what they like at home, and that's what their moms make them every day. And they really experiment with different things at all of the schools. So our lunch prices are gonna stay the same at Central School at $2.75, at the Gordon Mitchell, $2.85, the junior senior high school at $3. Reduced lunch is, is 40 cents at all schools, um, and milk is 65 cents. And then à la carte prices are ranging from a dollar to a dollar fifty. She can't put a price on all of that because she does go out, um, for bid on some of those with, is it Thurston Foods, John? Is it Thurston? One, is one of them, but she does go out and look for better prices, and she goes out for bids. And a dollar fifty all schools. All, all schools will serve breakfast this year again, and we push it. If you drop your kids off early and they go to a little, uh, they go to before and after care, they get breakfast. They should have breakfast with us. We serve a full breakfast. I want more students at the junior senior high school to eat breakfast, because we know older students tend not to just leave the house and jump on the bus and, without breakfast. So, um, a positive or zero balance in its nonprofit school first service account as of December 31st, 218, is exempt from PLE pricing requirements founded. This is just the, the, um, the law and the requirement from DESI that you're reading. But what it's saying is, is that we're doing a good job, and we're, we're getting kids to eat our lunches. Less and less are bringing, so they're buying lunches, which, again, pushes up, uh, over the limit. So they see that we are selling more lunches, which is good for us, and the kids are eating well. So I just wanna thank, uh, Deb Vaughn and her crew on, um, our food program here at EB. It's, it's a, it's, it's a challenge, and she does very, very well. And she's also, uh, using some of, um, what she can for us. She bought tables, um, high-top tables that Dr. Williams has helped, um, uh, pick out the colors and the Viking head, I think, that's on the table. They're high-tops for the junior senior high school, so kids can stand there and eat. Um, it's pretty cool-looking. And then we'll have some out by the, um, uh, for athletic games on the inside in that foyer, so, and then if we do, and then during the Viking block, if we open up the concession stand during the year, kids will be able to come down and have a snack. Um, so that's, those are good things. Um, and I think you've, you've picked the Viking and the, the colors of the tables and...
Yep, yep, so we have vertane yellow high tops that will go down the center of the cafeteria, and then we'll have high-top circular tables that'll go the perimeter of the cafeteria. As well as, like Superintendent said, we'll have round high tops in the foyer that have the Viking logo in the center.
Nice.
So it's, you know, a little bit more, we're catching up to West Bridgewater. And so, at, finally, finally.
I just, I just wanna say, having a child at the Mitchell and a child at the Central, we, we play this little Sunday night game every week, our kids, of going through the weekly menu and bringing or buying, and, you know, making lunches at six in the morning is, nobody wants to do that. And I've watched over the last four years, my kids go from about 80% bringing to about 80% buying, and my kids are very picky eaters. And, um, it's a tribute to the hard work of the staff there. They love lunch at the schools.
And she does a lot of surveying, like she brings, and she does a lot of, a lot of taste testing.
Yeah.
They did, um, they do a lot with avocados.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we had, we had shipments of avocados at one time. Oh, and orange chicken was a big seller this year. The kids loved it. We had it, uh, we had a lighthouse meeting with, um, all the superintendents in the lighthouse in the South Shore on last Wednesday, and she had orange chicken. And I can tell you, the superintendents loved it. So, um, that was great. So, but she does a nice job, and so do the ladies that work with her, and they work hard. Those cafeterias are, are hot, and they're busy. I mean, those kids come through. They wanna eat, and they're ready to go. Um, but she's also, she bought tables for junior senior high school, and she's painting the.
Mitchell School.
The Mitchell School cafeteria and, um, the, the kitchen. So they're cleaning it, um, she's steam cleaning it and power washing it, um, and then they will paint it. She's big into cleanliness, which we all are. It is a good thing, so. But I just wanted to say kudos to her, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Um, next up, we have the superintendent's, uh, compiled evaluation, the compilation of all the individual evaluations. I'm just gonna run through it quickly. This is for the FY19 year.
I didn't give you one.
Uh, we have, the front page is the end of cycle summit evaluation report. So, uh, we have professional practice goal met, superintendent learning goal met, district improvement goal met. Standard one instructional leadership was proficient, uh, standard two management and operations proficient, standard three family and community engagement proficient, and professional culture exemplary. We have end of, uh, let's see, rate overall summer for, the overall summer support, performance is proficient. Rate on, uh, impact on student learning was moderate, and some comments. Excellent and effective leader, confident in her abilities, need for specific goals, uh, effective and outstanding leadership. Professional development academy, academy is exemplary, improved budget, improved communication and collaboration with town. Um, the next page is professional practice. We have, uh, one, let's see, these are the goals. So during 2018-19 school year, superintendent Legault will use comparative data received from new curriculum and map assessment. Uh, we have met. Student learning improved student writing proficiency was met. District improvement, organized budget building process that is inclusive of all stakeholders, um, that was met. Focus on culture and climate of school district by evaluating district communication protocols, uh, that was met. And the last one, number five, uh, continue to offer and support professional development opportunities, that was met. And then we have the next page, superintendent's performance rating for standard one instructional leadership. Uh, so when we do this, just for, I know you all know now, but, and for people out in TV land, or for everyone, for the community, well, for the community. Uh, we have a number of, uh, indicators, and we select only a few from the list because there's so many to choose from. So we have one, um, we have, we chose 1A, which is curriculum, and 1B, which is instruction, and those we found to be proficient. We have, uh, some of the comments, and the overall was proficient, and some of the comments are opportunity to improve overall student achievement. Science and technology needs focus, uh, need focus on junior senior high school actively. Well, that would be great. Now we have a new high school principal, so that, that's gonna work out well. Um, actively working on curriculum and instruction strategies and conducting regular and continuing, conducting regular, oh, and continuing, uh, school visits with assistant superintendent. And then we have 2A environment that was found to be proficient, 2E fiscal systems was found to be exemplary for an overall of proficient. We have need more resources in support of social emotional needs of students, lack of adjustment counselors, Liz is providing clear direction and standards, fiscal standards and management are excellent. meets frequently with, uh, business administrator, and continues to work on and support the strategic plan, well within our budget, worked well with town and other department heads. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three family and community engagement. We selected 3C, which was communication, we found to be proficient, overall proficient. She has had an effective communication with the community, briefs to school committee as needed, works with administrators to continue to improve communication, and, um, keeps community informed with regard to junior senior high school principal and select, oh. That's an old item.
It's still a check, though. We gotta do it.
We have, um, standard four professional culture, that's, um, we picked, we selected 4A commitment to high standards, and that was found to be exemplary. And overall, uh, rating was exemplary, fosters shared commitment to high standards of serving, teaching, and learning. High expectations for all, working on a plan for universal design and full inclusion, leadership direction and values are exemplary. And that is it. Thank you, Superintendent Legault, for doing a great job.
I think, I think the people at home to know that we don't just pick this out of the air, we follow this recommended DESI format. And as Liz, I mean, as Ellen said, there's a whole bunch of stuff on here. We pick what we think is relevant, and we think we have to pick for next year as well now, too.
We do, we have a meeting. Yeah, we'll be setting up a meeting with Liz.
I have it, ready?
Probably right before the school committee meeting.
Yep. And, um, now being on the committee for a number of years, um, my, um, respect for the complexity of the job that you do has just grown year after year. It is amazing. All of us can sit at a distance and have an opinion one way or the other, but when you really dig into it and find out just how complex it is to run an entire district, we might be the biggest, we might be the smallest, doesn't matter, because it, every, everything matters. And, um, there's just so many components, um, and I just think, thank goodness, there's this format. Thank goodness, we work with Liz. She supplies us with a lot of information. It isn't just people's opinions, um, there's data that backs it up. Um, and then I think, at least I know, I try, I think we all try to add comments. Uh, I think there's a few notes in there we think we need to get better at, and I think you recognize that as well, too. And to your, your, to your credit, you're always asking us, you know, "What do you need me to do?" You just let me know, and I'll do it. And, uh, far as I'm concerned, every time you've said that, and we've asked you something, you've produced. So, um, I just think it's, uh, you hold such an important role in the town, certainly for the district, um, and, uh, we appreciate the job that you do. Um, and there's always room for improvement. All of us have it. It's a matter of identifying it and working together to get there. But it doesn't mean that we don't appreciate where we are and how we've gotten there. And, uh, there's so many tremendous accomplishments. Sometimes they get kind of, they fade off pretty quickly. But, um, I know for one, seeing the progression through these last few years, it's pretty impressive and pretty noticeable. Uh, and so, um, I just wanted to add those couple of things because I, the, the complexity is, is really pretty, pretty impressive, all the different components, like I said, so. And we're, I'm, I'm glad, I think we're all glad that you're here, Liz.
Every single time I come in the office, Liz is always on the go, always busy, always working hard. Same thing with the assistant superintendent Gina Williams, and also, uh, John Shea. All three of them.
No.
No.
John.
I never see them doing, I never see them doing nothing. So, and I.
I'm just kidding.
The three must be tears. I think you work well together.
You know, I, putting together a team is probably the most difficult thing that a, um, a leader can do because you need to find people that are smarter than you. You need to find people that wanna work harder than you. You want, you want people that want to be better than you, so you need to be smarter than them to get better than them. And you gotta run faster than John, which is not that hard anymore.
Wow.
Um, but we, we race all the time. I just want everybody to, um, my principals push me, my assistant principals push me. Um, John Phalen has just been a tremendous boost for our special education department. He was, um, the last piece to this puzzle of a, of a good central administration. Deb Vaughn, um, she's tough. She's tough on John and tough on me. Um, John is terrific. You, you know, I trust him. He's confident in his numbers, and I'm confident in him. And I've said this before, but you cannot lead a district without a partner. And Dr. Williams has been truly a partner since I began here, and she pushes me to be better. She makes me think a little bit harder each day. She makes me make sure that I think about everything, that when I make a decision, it's not just based on two things, it's based on all things. So they make me better, and, uh, especially the staff inside the office, Joanne Benner, um, Melanie Lanny, and of course, I couldn't move, uh, without Barbara Polisi. So, you know, really, we're just as good as, you know, the weakest man on the, or the weakest girl on the chain, and that would probably be me with my staff, and, um, they're terrific. So thank you for the, this has been great. Thank you.
Nice.
Look forward to another, how many years do you have left on your contract? We look forward to working with you.
Twenty.
I hope a lot.
You have another twenty.
I just gave Dr. Williams more than me.
Thank you. And next up, we have, uh, the first reading of the proposed change to the school committee policy, EFD meal charge policy. And we have that enclosed. Uh, and so, okay, so just to go over that.
Deb Vaughn sent that up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we have, um, the part that needed to change was in yellow. It says, "Any remaining funds for a particular student, whether positive or negative, will be carried over to the next school year." And that needed to change because of, um, requirements in law. So the change has, um, it's been changed to read, "Any remaining positive funds for a particular student will be carried over to the next school year. Unpaid meal charges are carried over at the end of the school year beyond June 30th, as a delinquent debt and collection efforts will continue to, into the new school year." So, um, that was changed out of necessity, out of requirement. So that's the first reading. And then, um, next up, we have, um, Mr. John Shea, school administrator. He's going to discuss with us FY19 operating budget, non-salary expense, soft write report, and revolving account summary.
I'm passing around the, sorry I didn't get this out last week, but I was knocked out with Lyme disease. I'm back.
Welcome back.
John, did you say Lyme disease?
That's what he said.
Oh. I'm glad you're back.
You recovering at Reba? I don't know, I got a call from Vegas. Twin River called us.
So this report is an update as of, uh, June 20th. There's 10 days left in the year. So this is where we get, uh, nervous and sweaty and, uh, just to make sure we, uh... so this is where we get nervous and sweaty, and, just to make sure we, we meet budget at year end, the non-salary budget, non-salary right now, we have an available balance of $47,075, last year at this time, we had an available balance of $13,274, I know we do have some outstanding bills, legal bills, I know there's a science, uh, science supply bill, but I, I think we're, as far as non-salary goes, we're in good shape, as we were last year. Salary budget, we have an available balance of 2.6, almost 2.7 million dollars, yet last year at this time, we had an available balance of 2.5 million, as, as I have explained to you guys in the past, I project out the year, I updated every payroll period, I'm estimating payroll through the end of the term to be approximately 2.6 million five, 2,650,000, so I, I think we're really in good shape on the salary side, too, so I'm pretty confident that, again, we will be under budget.
And then will we be asking for those funds to go into the Fed Reserve?
Well, we, we kinda set a precedent this year, that we were under budget last year, and I asked, and because we're under budget, those, those funds flow to fleet, flow to free cash, and I asked in an article that those funds be transferred to the special ed reserve fund, so, I think it was a pretty good precedent, it's a way to, to fund this, although $6,000 isn't gonna do much, but I think every, a little bit helps, and I would, if we come under budget this year, I would propose to do the same thing next year.
Does the town have any mechanism short of us being under budget to fund that special ed reserve?
We can, there's, there's a lot, a lot of different ways you can fund it, you can fund it in your operating budget, we could ask for more money out of, out of free cash.
Okay, so was there any, when it was created, was there any plan or thought into, like, in the future, we'd like to contribute 50 grand a year, or anything like that, or was it just kind of a, we'll see how it goes?
When we first started, we just wanted to get it open.
Sure.
That's how really was, was, we weren't sure if it was going, if they were, if we were going to be allowed.
Right.
And, really, I mean, when we started, we weren't sure if they were gonna allow us to open it.
Gotcha.
So, so that's something we could think about.
You know, my intent was, you know, if we do come under budget, which is a good thing, then I think.
Yeah.
Funding that fund, that reserve fund would be a great idea, and help us in the, in the future, in case we ever need it. But again, when we, when we do the budget next year, that's something we can, we can discuss. Any questions on that? Revolving fund balances are doing, are doing well, circuit breaker right now has a, a balance of 763,000, there's still a, a payment due, but at the end of the year, that fund balance can only, the total of that account can only be $500,000, so we are working with special ed to prepay tuitions next year, in order to get that down to 500,000, because we, we can't carry over more than 500,000 next year, 501,000, I believe.
Unbelievable.
School choice is doing well, we should receive a couple more payments in school choice, so probably another 45,000 there, no plans to spend any of that over the next 10 days. Athletic fund, a little lower than last year, part of that is, you know, we spent a lot of money on uniforms this year, we do, pretty much spent everything out of the athletic fund that we will be spending, we are expecting a payment from West Bridgewater for this year of hockey, to the tune of about $7,700, I believe, so that, we'll, we should see an increase there. As far as the other, other funds, preschool doing well, sped tuition, then revolving is lower than last year, but as, I, I think I explained a couple times, we, we've had less kids coming in from other towns, so that would reduce that, but we, hopefully, in, in our budget, we've included a couple more kids coming in, which is Jay Phalen from our special ed department feels that that will happen, so that should turn that around a little bit. School building rental is doing great, you know, the, a lot of that is Joanne and Candice Lazly, they, they do a great job with that, we do, I, you know, I probably will be bringing some ideas and, and needs, especially in the auditoriums at the middle school and the high school, to get your approval to possibly spend, spend some of that money in the lecture hall, some work that needs to be done in the lecture hall. Bussing fees holding steady, before and after school care holding steady, we're, we're still looking at the possibility of renovating the old shop area at the middle school for before and after care, using these funds to do so. And Little Vikings, Little Vikings is high right now, but that's because.
We haven't paid anyone.
We have the tuition, but we haven't paid anyone out yet.
For those people who are at home, if you don't get to see this, what's in front of us, but just to give you an idea, that back in 2014, many of these balances were negative, so obviously, good indication of just how well the district was running, particularly in, credit to Liz, and certainly to John, that these things are running so well, that it's a source of strength, not a so, source of weakness, so, thank you.
You could see it at the far right column in 2014.
Right.
A lot of those accounts were negative balances.
Yep.
Five out of nine. You know, I can tell you, having had, having had a child in before and after care in 2014, and hearing from parents now about it, just the process for collecting payments, there, you know, the, just, it's so much more well organized now than it was, and it shows why here, I mean, it was kind of a mess five or six years ago when my kids were in it, so.
Yeah, we, we've done a lot of improvements, Erica Christie in, in our office has been setting, doing as much as she can, setting up all these extracurricular programs on QuickBooks, so it makes life so much easier than. Any questions on that?
No, great job.
So, I, I did add, add something new, I guess it's, it's a little disheartening to, to hear a lot of the scuttlebutt out there about how we're not focusing on spending money on the kids, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, and maybe that's partly my fault because I don't, maybe I'm not sharing as much as I could be, or in a format that I should be to you guys, to help you explain this, but I, just for the junior senior high school, I wanted to show you the, the 2018 budget, 2019 budget, and 2020 budget, and these are the different line items in, in the high school category for supplies, textbooks, and you could see, just looking at the grand total, we had a budget in 2018 of $25,400 total. In 2020, we have a budget of 51,150, we've increased the budget in two years 100 percent, and you can argue maybe that's not enough, but I, I don't think you can argue the fact that we're not trying to do, to do what's, what's best, and trying to put more money into the, into the programs for the kids.
So John, I have a question, looking at this breakout of all the different subjects, departments, et cetera, so to your point, when you're trying to navigate information, and there's information out there saying, you know, the money's not being spent on textbooks, or there's not enough safety equipment in the labs for labs, what is the process? Does the teacher need to put in a request, and how is that request handled? So, so to hear that, okay, we have a science program, and I'm just using an example, we have a science program, and we don't have enough safety equipment, so we can't do the appropriate labs or what have you, if we, if we don't have that equipment, how would we get it? Because there's clearly money being spent, so is a request not being made?
Well, I, I can tell you, two years ago, with, with science, I mean, there was a lot of work done, Gina did a lot of work with science, dealing with the science department, they spent about $150,000 on science. It's outside of this, because this is just the normal operating budget, but there was about $150,000 spent on science, just like anything, if there's a need, they need to, they need to communicate.
And that's what I'm asking, so when you hear that, is it because the need isn't being put forth? So, so there's a process, if a teacher says, oh, I need some more lip books, or.
The first thing I do, is if, if a teacher comes to me.
Go ahead.
I will say, put it in writing to the principal, copy Mrs. Williams, Dr. Williams, and copy me.
Gina.
So I can stay on top of it. Two years ago, the art department came to me, the art department came to me, in their email, they said, you're not spending money on art supplies, we're buying it ourselves, so I said, well, you know, it's the first time I'm hearing that, put together, put together a summary, talk to the principal, talk to Mrs. Williams, and then we'll, we'll work on it, and you, and you can see, the art department went from 3,500 in 2018, and now it's up to $6,000. I mean, that's, that's really the, the way it's supposed to work.
So it's that the teachers are perhaps not putting in the request?
So, if I may.
Yes, please.
You mind, John? So, the principals will talk, let's just say at the junior senior high school, we do have lead teachers, like we do at all the schools, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on the junior senior high school, principal goes out and meets with the lead teachers, what do you need? After the principal has that need list, there could be some needs, there could be some wants, what's in the curriculum review cycle, that's on the outside, that's Dr. Williams on the, the curriculum review cycle in science, this year it was so, this year it's social studies and world language, last year it was wellness, health and wellness, once the principal has that, they cannot go directly to John and just hand over a piece of paper and say, I want all this, it must be vetted through the assistant superintendent's office. There has to be a protocol, because we could be, we could be spending, you know, I could, someone said to me once, you're spending like a drunken sailor. There's gotta be a protocol. If Dr. Williams does not know the program, if doesn't, it's not in the program of studies, it's not vetted through Dr. Williams, she doesn't know how many students are there, or what, what have you, it doesn't get pushed to, to the business office.
Okay.
So the principal must come up, and then it goes to Dr. Williams, then Dr. Williams gets it, and she's done it a couple of times this year, I don't wanna speak for it, but she's had the principal sit with her, and then she pushes it back and says, I don't have enough information, give me more, it goes back, principal comes back and then advocates once again, and says, well, we really need this, I've heard Dr. Williams said, no, you can get, out of your 42,000, you can get 33,000, but I'm not going to spend here because we did last year, what happened to this equipment, or what happened here? And then usually, we'll come back around, right now, which Dr. Williams did today, I received a proposal from some, for science equipment, because I spoke to science last week on the scheduling and this and that, and I had a nice conversation with junior senior high school teachers, I sat in a meeting, Dr. Williams was actually out at the Mitchell School, she came back today, I took it, I gave it, I got a, I think about 12 or 13,000 worth, I gave it to Dr. Williams, she's now going through it, I think it was, I think there was an email given today, she's approving this, and now it goes to John, but it didn't just get approved by Gina, she, you know, looks through it, talks to the lead teacher, comes back, you know, how, what are we doing, so I don't wanna speak for you, but.
Right, so, I mean, the, the curriculum review cycle is a six-year cycle, we're only, we just finished year three, so until we've gone through all six years, we haven't gone through this process with every content area, but essentially, it's, as we go through a content, so two years ago, science, the main bulk of the money that year is for curriculum resources, whether it's online or hardcover text, that's the bulk of it, but then also, they establish supplies and materials, of those supplies and materials, anything that's considered a consumable would then be factored into the building-based budget the following year, so that's how John has been able to adjust the building-based budget, knowing what consumables they're gonna have to reorder every year.
Okay.
The, the piece that recently came up, even though science isn't on for curriculum review cycle, they're getting the supplies of the 14,000, about 8,000 was supplies, and that's what the budget's being increased to for this year, but then there was about another 6,000 for replacement of hot plates and, and some equipment that we got when we first opened the new school, and now, six years later, things need to be replaced.
Sure.
So I think a little bit of it was the staff not knowing where does replacement equipment come into play, knowing that consumables and supplies and materials are the building-based budget, the curriculum review cycle is more for the textbooks and the online resources, and science is a little bit different in that aspect, that there's a lot more lab equipment, or essentially only lab equipment in science, as opposed to the other areas, so, we're working those kinks out as we go through each content area, so that hopefully by year six, we've established building-based budgets for reoccurring costs, and big renewals or new adoptions are gonna be on those, the cycle years.
So I just think it's important for parents to know, that it's, you know, needs are not being necessarily overlooked, perhaps there were some, some misunderstandings about the communication process, or how to ask for these, or, or what have you, but it's not as though kids are in classes and they don't have the necessary textbooks, or the necessarily, the necessary tools for a lab, or something like that.
I, I can't say enough about John and Gina, what they do, but there's, I don't think there's been a principal who has come up, any of our principals who have come up and advocated for something mid-year, after we got out there and they just needed more. Usually it's the elementary school, it's usually central school, because it's a consumable that they're going through too quickly, orange paper in October, red and green, and, and we, it's a jo, I mean, we, we smile when Kate comes up, because we know what she's coming to get, but Valentine's Day is red.
Yep.
So, and pink, but I don't think there's a principal that a teacher has gone to and said, I really need this, they come up and advocate, Gina, it may take Gina a day to think about it, and to say, is this really what we need, and it is, is it in the best interest of the fourth grade to get this? Is this what we want for the fifth grade? Once it's there, I, I don't think I've heard of say no, and I don't think I've heard John say no.
No, it's mostly been a breakdown of communication here at the junior senior high school.
That's what I'm gonna ask, so, so at the lower level, the Mitchell and, and the central, so, I specifically had an example in recent years with a teacher, and won't get into specifics here, obviously, but, where my wife and I were questioning the book that the class was reading, in that it seemed below the level of, of the grades the kids that were at, and after a couple of minutes of conversation, the teacher candidly admitted that it was the only set of books that they had a full class set of available, and so, I guess I would question, in a situation like that, what would be the process at the low elementary, elementary level, would the teacher still work through the principal, and then go through John? It seemed like there was a breakdown, in this case, in the kids being able to get something that the teacher wanted to teach.
Yeah, so usually, I mean, as the superintendent said, it would start with conversations that the building principal would be having with the teachers.
Okay.
About what the needs are, and then from the, then it would go from the principal, then if there was, you know, a need for additional financial support, then.
So there's no go-between at the lower levels, it's really between teacher and principal?
Yes.
Okay.
And so certainly, teachers have the opportunity going into the new school year, as well as mid, mid-year, or really, any point in time in the school year, if there's a need, they can present it, and then obviously, it would be considered, is it feasible, is it necessary? So, that, that process is understood.
And there's a gatekeeper, which is me.
Yes.
So when the principals don't go to Dr. Williams, and I, and this happened this year, and John said, and we, we understood, we were running a program, and both Gina and I saw it on one of the sheets, and we said, how did this course get in? It's a great course to have, we're very excited that we're having it, but who, who said this was okay? It got to John's desk, somebody could've just went in and just put it down there, and he just assumed that it was okay, but then John walked over and said, hey, we're running this course? If we don't know, we're not, we cannot just say yes, regardless if it's a $3,000 or $15,000, but everything must, and, and the gatekeeper has to be. But everything must, and the gatekeeper has to be one of us, or the three of us, you know, when it comes to the curriculum instruction, it's got to go through Dr. Williams, because she's overseeing that. She knows what they're doing. When, you know, Tim, when you said about the books, I know that we've gotten better at our craft up here, and I know the principals have too. I know that now that they're sitting down in common planning time, which they never had before, where they sit down and they really hone in on what are the grade-level books, and now with universal design, we're looking at different books, an array of books for the fourth grade, for the fifth grade. I mean, they're all going to be different titles, different depths, different learning. So I really think that we're getting better at our craft, which is allowing the principals to get better at their craft, which is allowing teachers to feel more supported by the administration.
So I know we can always, we can always do more for our kids.
Oh, yes.
There's always more money we could spend, more needs, but is there anything urgent that you would say that we would need right now at the seventh and 12th level that we haven't been able to provide? Like, is there, I mean, without getting into specifics, a yes or no question. Is there things still outstanding that we have to say, we just can't do it right now, even though we feel like the teachers really need it right now?
For programming?
Programming, yeah.
So there's a few things. One is robotics. So actually, one of the tech education teachers had shared with us a proposal, maybe in March, that he had written up in 2015. We just saw it for the first time in March. You know, we're anxious to have robotics at all levels, however, we have to start somewhere. So because students have had steam at the Mitchell School, we'll be starting with robotics here with seventh and eighth grade, and then building as those kids age through. And certainly, we'll have to build capacity to be able to have more advanced robotics as the students get older. The other piece...
Oh, we have funded.
We do. Oh, yes. So we do have robotics. One of the ways that we were able to do it is by the support of the before and after care program, because then they can be used for little Vikings in after-school and over the summer. So they'll run three sections of robotics this fall. The other thing is, this year, we have world languages, which in social studies and world languages, so that's foreign language. And there's been lots of discussion. We've even had positions available to hire and could not recruit any foreign language teachers at the lower levels, but now there's the opportunity for students to earn bilingual seals before graduation. So we really want to work hard on getting, at a minimum, at the seventh and eighth grade level, for students to be able to acquire one year of solid foreign language, so that they could then potentially get to a Level V by the end of their senior year. So those are a couple.
I feel really strongly, you know, it's our duty as a school department. I mean, we don't have to fund the Cadillac, but we fund the Ford Escort at a minimum, you know? And if we're presenting a budget to the town that doesn't even include these types of things that are, you know, the Ford Escorts, you know, it's our duty. So, you know, we look to next year's budget. These are things I'd like...
All right. And I think, I think things are changing. You know, the school department has changed over the last four years since I've been here.
Yep.
We've passed a budget every year. We're in good standing. We're hiring teachers, and we're really, we're on an upward swing.
No doubt.
They're going to be hiring a new town manager. Actually, one came to visit me and asked about the schools yesterday. I sat with him for about 40 minutes. Rocco Longo has sort of just steered the ship, and, I mean, when we met with him about our budget, he was like, we're all set, and you're going to be fine. I think he's being more transparent. He's showing revenue coming in, revenue going out. I think that, he called me today and asked me for the ClearGov information, so that the town can be more transparent. And I think that in the, I think that our time has been the four years coming. I think now that the town is going to catch up to the schools and say, okay, now it's our turn to do the transparency and to do these things. We are, as a school, we decided, my team, that the piece of the pie is not just going to be all salary. It's going to go towards kids, our students. And as you can see, like John said, 100%, you know, even at the school, 25,000 to 50,000, you know, in a three-year period, that's, or two-year period, that's darn good. And we're, we, because we stay focused on what we want to do. And some people don't see it, but we're focused. We're focused on our kids, and we're focused on supporting our teachers. I think with the change in the town government, with the increase in Chapter 70, we're seeing it. We're going to see it. I was told two weeks ago at the South Shore, when we were up there, I was sitting next to the business administrator from another district, a couple other superintendents. You know, ours is looking at an increase of what, about $250,000, John, this year, and about 500 next. They're even saying it could be up to $350,000 this year, and then next year, up to $800,000. Hearing that from the superintendent from Brockton, who's up on Capitol Hill all the time, because she's the fighter, and she is the Chapter 70, she is our avant-garde up there, you know, pushing for that new Chapter 70 funding, we're going to see it. And I think the town needs to realize, we're part of it, and we were part of the advocacy. You went this year, you saw it. I mean, school districts are walking all around, trying to get in to see these senators, like, don't let us down, and the reps, don't let us down. I think things are changing. And we had an administration that said 2%. Even if, and I think it would have been a hard get two years ago, I think it would have been a hard year, hit a year ago, we stood our ground this year. I think John and I, and Gina, you know, held the fort here, as John and I were running up and down from the town, and holding the line. I mean, we started at 3.5, 3.74, and we came down.
I meant, this is no...
Oh, no, I know, but...
I'm really happy with this.
Yeah.
It's great. I just want to make sure we're continuing to push the...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that, I think that it's going to change. And I think that, you know, we do pretty well in East Bridgewater, and people need to realize that they do well in East Bridgewater. And it's okay to do well. It's okay to be okay, and it's okay to have a $900,000, you know, plus, every year. It's okay. That means you're doing well. It means your kids are doing well in school and this and that. But some of that money's got to come to the schools, some of it's got to go to the police, some of it's got to go to safety, some of it, some go to the library, because it's a town. So I do, I think things are changing. I mean, John, you feel that when we go up there? I mean, you definitely feel that. So when you say push, I'm going to push, I'm meeting with Rocco on Tuesday. I'm going to push there on Tuesday. So, because there's things that we want to see, like you said, the efficiency. There is another program that I've been pushing, John and Patrick. They've tried to do it last year for athletics. It's called Arbiter. It helps pay the referees and umpires, and it makes it a streamlined process. Instead of touching my hands, John's hands, Joanne's hands, Patrick's hands, it goes right into, John just funds it, and then people like have, I think, an ATM card or whatever for the umpires and refs, and they just go and they do it. It would streamline the process. I think it would make our hands cleaner when it comes to athletics. And I think John does a good job at trying to put those types of programs in place. I think with the new town administrator and the new, the way the town is going, I think that Arbiter may be in our sights. So I think it's going well.
Great.
But you're right. Don't stop.
Right.
Don't stop.
Thank you. Can I just ask one question? So literature, books, and novels purchased, was that from this year or a previous year?
Oh, I, well, I added, I added that because I've heard a lot of talk that we have, we've got kids walking around with tattered books, and we're not spending money on novels. You can see from that, we spent almost $8,000 on novels this year. And those five novels there, we bought about 40 of them.
Even more ones than that.
Wow.
So, no. I just want to get this, give you guys the...
Thank you, because I think it's important, because you do hear, and you can't always speak to it directly, if your kid, you know, doesn't have direct experience. And that's why I asked, you know, specifically about science and literature, because you do hear these things, and it's helpful to see this type of information.
Did you have anything to say about end of the year, stuff for kids? I was just asking Dr. Williams, was there anything that kids needed to do over the summer that maybe, that we should just relay one more time on the summer reading and...
Summer reading is on the district website. The theme for the district is responsibility. So at the Mitchell School and at the junior, senior high school, there is a suggested list. However, they have the option of choosing their own book, as long as the character demonstrates responsibility within the story. Central School is still one book. Pigsty, I think, is the book. And they also have a scavenger hunt for the lower level.
I love that.
And the librarian at the, at the East Bridgewater Public Library, she's very helpful, and she has the list of the books.
Yep.
They're all gone.
And she has recommendations.
Will they hire her?
Went today. And so she has other recommendations that she can help with.
John, could you buy some more books?
So, just some quick feedback. I was wondering, so when we do these summer reading projects, I know some other schools do an option to purchase the book, and there's a thing they work on, I don't know the specifics, but they're working with Amazon, and it benefits the school district a little bit financially. Like, there's, is there, we consider that?
So we've done that in the past with both Central School and Central School, when it's been one book. It makes it a little bit more difficult when we have a list of titles to choose from. In years past, actually, it's been the PTOs who have actually purchased the books for the students to have. I don't know as far as going forward, whether an option for us to bulk buy.
Sometimes when you go onto the sales network for the library, you can put books on hold, so they'll send them from another library and then send them over to ours.
Yeah, there's now apps out there where you can even download the books at no cost.
And I know one of the purchasing groups I belong to will share the discount with families, too.
Cool.
So that's something we can talk about.
Add that on to the site.
Thank you. At this time, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting, student parent evaluation from May 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I go on that, with the executive session?
Yes.
Aye.
At this time, I would take, thank you. At this time, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting, student parent evaluation from May 1st, 2019.
So only those of us who are there could...
Yes.
Just me, that wasn't...
Okay. No, I, I just want to make sure I understood, so, okay. So I move.
Gordon, motion by Gordon, second. By Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I would take a motion to approve Council Payable Warrant 52V dated June 19, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Trista, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve Payroll Warrant 51PS dated June 12, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Gordon, second. Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And so at this time, I have, because, so we talked about EFD, meal charge policy, that was the first reading earlier on the agenda. So I would take a motion, because it's, because it's required, that we have to do this, and it also has to get into the, it needs to be into the student handbook for this coming school year, and they do it all the summer, so I would take a motion to waive, which we can do, we can waive the three-reading process and vote on the first reading of the recommended change to the school committee policy EF, as in Frank D, meal charge policy that's due to time limitations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So at this time, I would make a motion to approve the school committee, excuse me, approve the school committee policy for the recommended changes of the policy EF, as in Frank D, meal charge policy to be implemented for the FY '20 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? I would...
I think that, just the last thing, I want to say, central office through the summer, if you want to meet with one of us, please call ahead, because we do take some time off. We haven't had any time off. We're not off this week, we're not off next week, but the Fourth of July week, we will, most of us are off. And then the following week, Dr. Williams and I are out for a conference, then the principals go for their conference, the, what did we just say, the 24th through the 26th. But if anybody wants to meet with us, if anybody needs anything from us, please call the, call us or email us. We'll get back to you. Someone will be there. Mondays and Fridays will be probably scarce, and Dr. Williams and I will share, I'll take on Mondays, and she'll take on Thursdays for me. So, Dr. Williams, right, or Tuesdays, whatever. We go back and forth. So, so one of us, call ahead, one of us will be there.
All at seating.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Liz, with regard to the, I know the negotiations ongoing with the teachers, whatever, assuming we can come to a conclusion on that sometime over the summer, we would vote on that at our August meeting, ideally, and then, so before we start the, into September.
I thought we had a very good meeting last night. I thought it was a robust discussion. I thought it was, it went, we were here for a while. I think we got a lot of things on the table. I thought it was a good discussion. We put a lot of dates out there for the summer. We understand that people are traveling. This is our busy season for the superintendent's office, is the last two weeks in June, and probably the first month, September and October, extremely busy for us in the business office. And we know that a lot of people go on vacations in the summer, so we understand that, and our teachers are on vacation, and it's hard to get these dates. We're hoping that we can get some things done. And usually, to be, to be frank, usually it comes down to the salary grid. Once we get that straightened out, and once we can get that in there, everything pretty much moves ahead, and then Dr. Williams takes over on the language. And we're ready for that, and I thought last night went really well. John did a terrific job, and I think that there's good conversation going, and we'll keep moving ahead.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have one last thing. So one thing I forgot to bring up, under the standing, subcommittees and standing committees of the community service, I know in the last meeting, I said we would bring, yeah, I'm talking too fast. If we could, we will be bringing it back at this meeting, the June 20th meeting, that was the community service as a graduation requirement, it is coming back in the fall at some point, still being tweaked.
I appreciate that, because I think with the new principal, I think, give him a chance to get in here and take it all in. So appreciate that.
So one last thing? So I'm going to, I will find out what night works best as far as the seventh or the sixth, and then I'll send everybody the names, so they'll know.
Excuse me, what is that workshop, Tom?
The workshop for all of us, and it's going to have quite a few things on it.
Oh, okay.
And it's either going to be Liz Valerio and Jim Hardy, maybe one would do half, and one with the other half, or it would be just Liz Valerio, which I still want to iron out. It would be a number of things.
I would suggest for, perhaps a future workshop...
Oh, and that's, sorry, go ahead.